Good morning. We have called the August 5th, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. I ask Councilman Donnell if he would lead us to our indication and pledge. If he would, please stand.
God of our weary years, God of our silent tears, Thou who hast brought us thus far on the way. We thank Thee for the opportunity of gathering today to do the city's business. We actually bless each and every one of the City Council persons here today. But not only us, just please bless the audience, those persons who are looking on television and other way. But we ask the Lord that you just don't bless us here in Jackson, Tennessee. We ask you to bless and be with our neighbors over in the Gaza Strip. We ask you to be with our neighbors over in Israel. We ask you to be with the hostages who are being held. We ask you to be with those persons who are suffering from attrition and starvation in Southern Africa. We ask you to be with those who are in Ukraine who are suffering daily. We ask you to be with all of your creatures, Lord, because all of us are precious in your sight. Bless, be with us, and let us do the city's business in a way that's beneficial to all. These are the blessings we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
Our pleasure, ladies and gentlemen, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three is roll call. So, Mark, here's you see that all councilmen, except for Councilmember Dodd, are present.
Councilman Dodd wanted everybody to know that he was at a conference, a T M L conference in Chattanooga.
All right, thank you, Councilman Donnell. Uh, next up, we have approval of the minutes from July 1st, 2025 Council Meeting. Those minutes were emailed out to you all. There are no additions or corrections. They stand approved as read. And five is proclamations and recognitions. We have a American Rescue Plan update from our community support fund from Habitat for Humanity.
Good morning, Council. Good morning, Mayor.
Good morning.
Loving this fall weather we're getting the past few days. Um, I have a brief presentation just to look at an overview from our ARPA funding we received this past year and what that's done for some folks that we've been able to provide some services for. So, I'm gonna delve into this for you. So, we don't just build homes. We also do some repairs for seniors. Uh, we have a program called Aging in Place. It's a program that serves qualified folks over sixty and above whose income is sixty percent or below AMI. And if they are up to date on mortgage and tax payments, we are able to provide services to them up to $10,000. And through AIP, Habitat Jackson operates with local licensed, verified, and experienced minority-owned contractor businesses to complete critical repairs so folks can remain in their homes safely. And here is this report through fiscal year 25, which ended in June. Generated four hundred and sixty-eight, five hundred and fifty dollars in direct assistance. We were able to serve fifty-four individuals through different projects through the allocated funding. And most of our services were in districts two and five. And the majority of our clients were African-American. And the average annual income of our clients was $20,101. So, most homes needed quite a bit of repairs. But what we focused on was weatherization, accessibility, and various critical repairs. Here's a snapshot of the project cost by districts and the households served by the AMI percentage. So, we're gonna look at the districts, um, by districts here. Um, we were able to serve three homes in District One, two in District, uh, six in District Two, and two in District Three. And you can look at these various income brackets as well as the average age of the recipient. As well as these two districts as well.
What was the difference between this page and the one previously?
So, these are districts one, two, and three, and these are districts four and five.
Go to the next one.
That, yeah, this is the first, uh, first page.
Okay.
Yep. And here's some snapshots of just some various projects we completed this past year. So, this was one repair we did. You can see there's quite a bit of, um, roof damage at this residence here. And then our contractors came in and were able to completely repair this roof for this aging resident in their home. Another repair here. Able to replace that window unit and door. Some interior help as well. There's another project.
Let me stop you real quick. Uh, Adam, just wanna let everyone know here that Austin Drummond is now in custody.
Open my bedroom door now.
Best news all day. Great. Another repair here. And these are just very few snapshots of some critical home repairs we've been able to do over the past year. I mean, there are so many wonderful stories. Cause you know, most of these folks are clear on a fixed income. They can't do these repairs themselves. They don't have the budget. They don't have the margin to do this. So, this was truly a godsend for our agency to do some good work for our Jacksonians. So, moving forward, we currently have more than eighty folks on our waiting list and interest list. And if you include Haywood, we service Haywood County as well. There's well over a hundred folks who need critical repairs. Um, we currently are serving these residents, so they can contact us on our website, jacksonhabitat.com/aiip, or contact our office, 731-736-1767, for more services. And even though this is funding from last year, we have some ways and funding. Uh, we are still serving the folks who need the work and the help. So, I just wanna thank each of you and thank the city, thank our residents for continuing to help those in need. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Brad?
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. And what's the procedure you go through? You contact this number, or you go on the way up on the line, on our line? And then you just fill it out, and then someone will contact them?
That's right. We have a director who handles all of our Aging in Place projects, and she will be in touch with anyone who applies.
Okay. And what's the, uh, is the income qualification?
Yeah, let me go back to that slide for you. So, we service folks who are in, um, like a sixty percent or below AMI.
And AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. And what's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
Is it too late to apply for help now?
It is not.
All right. What's the procedure you go through? You contact, AMI is?
It's, it's the average, like, so income, so, so the-
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
It's like they went walking with her when I was here.
You, you hear about what they think of the out and front of the city?
[laughing]
I can assure you that, um, that there are people who do not necessarily live in the heart of their community, but they understand what goes on and the, uh, ability to be able to move back and forth, uh, through that particular route that they want to close off. The ancillary streets, uh, really are not able to handle the type of traffic that they will receive if this proposal goes through. Our late representative, the Honorable Harvey Buchanan, understood this a few years ago, and he was moved against it also. So, that's just, just a brief survey of, uh, I've just expressing the risks and desires of some of the people I've spoken with, uh, in the community. And, uh, I appreciate you giving me a chance to speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
All right. So, we're just gonna go down the list of, of those who signed up, so we don't necessarily get one topic the whole time. Um, and next up, we have Mr. Trey Kleek.
Mayor, Council, good morning.
Good morning.
On your agenda today in the first reading, item number five is an issue to rezone a piece of property that's located on Van Drive. I wanted to speak in, uh, favor of that this morning. It's, uh, been only a couple of months since we concluded the city's budget hearings. And during that time, we had considerations, serious considerations of increasing the property tax rate here in the city. And I wanna highlight that development like this is the healthy way to increase revenue for the city, is to allow property owners to develop their property, uh, in many cases as they seek fit. That, that's the second part of it, is we wanna respect the rights of property owners, not just in our specific neighborhoods, but across the entire city. Uh, Van Drive is the largest retail hub for rural West Tennessee. And it, it makes perfect sense to, uh, have a piece of property located in such close proximity to the retail hub for such a large amount of people to be able to be rezoned without, uh, too much fuss into something where a retail opportunity could be put in place. And I appreciate your, uh, consideration of that this morning. And I hope that y'all, uh, can, uh, see fit to vote to, uh, rezone that piece of property later on in the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Todd Soroki.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to speak on the rezoning of, uh, 191 Van Drive. Uh, as it stands right now, uh, I'm here on behalf of the Jackson Country Club and as a neighbor. As it stands right now, I remain opposed to that, um, to that rezoning. Although the country club has worked with the developers towards, uh, an agreement. We basically have a handshake agreement that I think would, would be beneficial to all the neighbors in the neighborhood. It's not signed. This ought to be tabled for thirty days, uh, in order to do that. Um, I, I think the developers at least told me orally, and they can confirm this or not, that they're agreeable tabling it. We, we have an agreement. It's, it's a situation where, um, their, their council needs to review it, uh, Mr. Patterson. Uh, otherwise, I'm opposed to it. I can go into all the reasons why I'm opposed to it. But I think what, what we've worked with them would be a, a way to develop this responsibly that addresses the concerns regarding drainage, regarding neighbors, regarding traffic, regarding density, regarding all the things. Absent that, we're, we're absolutely opposed to it, and all the neighbors are as well. But I think we ought to table it. I think we can get it worked out. They've at least agreed with me orally, and they can either confirm it or not. Colin's shaking his head, or Alex is shaking his head back there to table it thirty days. I think we'll work it out.
Shaking his head or nodding?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Is he shaking his head or nodding his head? Which one are you talking about?
Nodding.
He's nodding.
All right.
So, if the, if the council members have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer, but that's-
I do, yes. Uh, what would be, uh, they, they've put together a plan already. What would be the purpose of tabling it for another thirty days?
Uh, the purpose would be to, uh, to, to, to basically address the responsible development of that, of that property. It, there, there, and I don't wanna get into specifics of the agreements, that, the, sort of the handshake agreement that we've reached. Um, but, but it, it addresses the drainage situation over there. It addresses the density that, that, uh, of the development and the, the nature and the quality of the development. It gives the neighbors a sure, reasonable assurances that while this may not be what they, what they like, uh, what they, you know, would ideally want there, um, this is, this is sort of a best-case scenario.
And the, the developers are on page two of the public comment sign up sheet, so.
Scott, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Would the city not have the same things going on with traffic and drainage? I mean, we have to have a traffic study. They have to have a drainage study, all this stuff. So, where they have an agreement for that, that's already in place.
Yes, it happens. After, after the rezoning happens, when they go to the development plan.
It's disappointing that, uh, the vocal minority is trying to make it so difficult for what is otherwise reasonable and lawful development.
I agree.
Todd, may I ask a question? So, I understand that you all are working on an agreement.
Correct.
And as of last night, that wasn't signed.
As of this morning, it wasn't signed. I've, I've worked extensively on-
When was it sent?
It, it was sent yesterday. We, we met with deal points and I met with the developers for several hours on Sunday. We've met a number of times over the last week.
So, it was sent in the last hour, and it's not signed?
Not in the last hour. I mean, I, I sent it yesterday.
Yesterday. But yeah, I mean, literally the day before meeting. Okay.
So, what's the damage gonna be if we wait thirty days?
I, I don't wanna, you know, I, I think there's probably gonna be some litigation, some other stuff. You know, I, I think there's a lot of other options out there, but I, I, I don't think there's gonna be any damage if you wait thirty days. I think you're gonna have an agreement in place that, that provides the best-case scenario of development of this property. And, and you're not gonna have opposition from, uh, a large contingent of, of neighbors, um, including the country club.
I have a statement. I do think that, especially Alex has really tried. The ones that I asked him to reach out to, he did reach out to. Uh, but I, I also want to say, this is not the normal. But this did come to us from the planning department without an approval. So, it should take a little bit longer for us to look at and make sure everyone is good with it. And second-
Yeah, that was a, that was a three-one in favor with two abstaining.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, technically-
Now finish, Russ.
Uh, technically, that's in favor of. And I'm, I'm disappointed that the two members would abstain, uh, probably a lot of the local personal pressure that some of our council members are feeling.
As to finish to my point, I do think whenever possible, compromise is good. I think the residents should be aware that Van Drive is commercial. There's nothing on the front of that. I do not see a home coming there. But if you could work with the residents and say, "Look, this is gonna be commercial here, but these are the homes that we're gonna do. This is a buffer." Uh, for goodwill, if it does not put, that is just my comment and my thought.
All right. So, we're gonna come back.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Ruck, you have forty-two seconds. We're gonna come, because we got a lot of public comment here. You got forty-two seconds. I'm starting to chime in back. I stopped it when they start talking.
The acreage on the zoning amendment is incorrect. It says five point zero two acres. That they're, according to their request, it's only three point eight three acres to request to be rezoned. So, I don't know if that's a basis to table it, but-
Is that not because some of it stays residential?
I don't know. We're in the public comment section right now, so.
I just wanna bring that to the attention of the City Council. If you'd like me to continue to speak, I will. I'm-
You got twenty seconds.
I basically said my piece. I don't, I don't have anything else to, to, to add to the, the discussion. I've not already talked privately with a lot of the City Council members and residents and developers. I have tried to work with them. I, I feel like I, I did get kinda slammed towards the end just a little bit, and this got pushed through. I thought we'd have this agreement in place. And I sort of had the impression that we had this, would have this, a signed agreement. And I would, I would be in favor of it if we could get that in place, just so we could get-
Thank you, Mr. Soroki. That is the three minutes. All right. I'm struggling to read the next name, but I do know the address is 119 Rosewood. Okay, is it gonna? I didn't wanna.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. John Shaw.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't have guessed that at all right there, I'm gonna be honest with you.
You know, I've lived in that area-
Just go to the microphone right here. It's, there you go. Thank you.
I've lived in that area for almost all my years. Uh, Hayes Street was one of the main street in Milton. Milton, we had to have a, they had a speed bump put there right before my house because of the lane students speeding up and down. Hayes Street is the same way. Now, if you close lane, you have a nursing home with old peoples. They cannot get lane. It's a main corridor to get from, like, from Howland to Whitehall. Then you just build the football stadium over in that area. Then you're gonna throw the traffic through the neighborhood. People's gonna start to getting lost and getting in the wrong areas over there. Now, you're creating a problem right there again. You're creating a problem for the by trucks to get to us. You're creating a problem for the Amalans to get to the nursing home and to the people sitting in the neighborhood. That's a problem that we don't need. We want to see everyone safe. Lane is another collar. I worked for the funeral home. Most of the time, people's call from out of town. They're coming out of Memphis. They come from Henson Way. They come in from Howland. And the way to bring them in to the funeral home and to the churches is up lane. You don't take them through the neighborhood five or six turns because they'll get lost. Come down Howland, off eight to two eight, come all the way to lane. Coming from Howland, come down to Forest, come off of Hollywood, come down Forest to Howland, either raw, and bring them to lane. The quickest cut. Amalans, if you cut it off for them to get over to the neighborhood, that mean they would have to go up Hardy. Hardy got two speed bumps. You're gonna jot a person, the, uh, patients in there. And then they got to get to the railroad track. That is a dangerous spot there because it's a blind track. All the weeds grow up. You have to look to see. That is blind up in there. And if you go right there around that curve, if they get over too far, they gonna hit that fence post that's hanging out from the gate at lane. Then if they have to go on up where the dome at, the girl's dumb half of the time. Right in that spot right there, there's double parked, a one that's hanging halfway out the street. So, the emergency vehicles can't halfway get through.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. That's three minutes.
Oh, man. That was fast.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up, we have Ms. Sharon Buchanan.
I'm Sharon Buchanan. Uh, my husband, Harvey Buchanan, was councilman up here for years until he retired. And then he, when he was here, he voted against lane closing. That's what I'm speaking out on. And I think it's all very bad decision because he made a very good point, and I will not repeat all that. But that's basically the issue. And, and the neighborhood is also against it, and we did come here and say, "No." But I'm, that's all I have to say on the matter.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
It's been ideal to close that section down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like it is.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
All right. Next up, we have Pamela Newble.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Here, uh, as a resident of the area of what the proposal for closing, uh, lane avenues is. And I've been a resident of, of that particular area for all my life. And, um, I won't repeat some of the same things that other, uh, residents and persons here have said. But I just jumped, jotted a few little notes down to bring to your attention. It's safe. It's, it's primary and essential twenty-four hours for residents living in the area. It's safe, it's primary and essential, twenty-four hours for residents living in the area. All pedestrians, nearby businesses, which we have two major businesses tucked in in our neighborhood, and all drivers on the adjacent streets. In the median area, there are residential homes, both privately owned and also residential property. Just this morning, I noticed that school buses use one of the streets, which is Orget Street. There are elderly persons that have lived there over fifty years. For everyone's safety is important to their homes, walking and driving in the neighborhood. A street closure would affect everyone with rerouted traffic, increased traffic onto nearby streets which are very narrow. Some don't even have sidewalks. Already have limited parking in these, in our residential areas for our guests and even the patrons of the businesses. There would be more safety risks for those walking on area streets. Residents, concerned citizens, and have available signatures do not approve of the permanent street closure, which would significantly affect the safety, daily living, and well-being, walking and driving in this area. Each year, there is a temporary closing of the proposed section, and this happens during Lane College's homecoming. We would like for you to be aware of that even this temporary closing does cause many problems for the residents and the community. We experience a very increased traffic flow, dangerous drivers, driving behavior, such as running the stop signs that are in the area, also the speeding and the loud noises. This would increase with that section being permanently closed. Residents are already at risk of even walking from home to home, even to the area businesses, or even going to visit their neighbors, you know, due to this present condition. That would even get worse if this street was closed. We would like to be, would like for you to consider another, other options for this closure.
Hi, Ms. Newble.
That maybe have a temporary closure, just like they have on a special occasion of homecoming. And please take our concerns in mind, because we were not informed of what was going on and represented in our district to even come earlier.
Thank you, Ms. Newble. Your three minutes is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
How many signatures, yeah?
Here, this is over three hundred.
Three hundred?
Over three.
You wanna give that to Marquesha so we can have, or do you wanna?
Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Next up, we have Marcela Luster.
Good morning, all.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am a resident in the area opposing the closure of Lane Avenue, Milton, and Hayes. I attend Macedonia Baptist Church, and I go right up Lane Avenue to do that, or sometimes I go up Milton to do that. I'm over there a lot. There are seniors that live in the neighborhood, and so we want everybody to be there safely. I know they wanna protect the students, but we have to think of the residents that are there. They're important, too. And that's all I have to say, and I'll be speaking for Brenda Brown as well, so you don't have to call her name.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have... Name starts with an L, last name starts with an M? McNay?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
It's a very beautiful signature. You can come up there and state your name in the microphone, so I can make sure I get that right for the record.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
My name is Libby McNary, and I live at one-twenty-six Country Club Lane. And I'm here based on facts of what I know is to be in opposition of the commercial development across the street at one ninety-one Van Drive. I'm gonna read since I don't have long. Our, my biggest concerns about this, and I will say that the developers were kind enough to meet with us and several other neighbors in the different neighborhoods down Country Club and around the Country, and around the Country Club itself. My biggest concerns are that there are twelve zero lot lines there. I know that you all think Van Drive is commercial, and it is. I can tell you that I have a breakdown of all the types of businesses, so I'm not really sure what could be built across the street that wouldn't cover the gamut of at least up to lows of the forty-nine businesses that I've looked at and the types of businesses. And I'd be glad to provide that list to you. I'm an analyst, and I deal with data and facts, but what was presented to us, well, there were just too many unknowns. I am concerned about the traffic. Van Drive is a nightmare. Country Club is heavily trafficked. We sometimes can barely get out of our driveways. I'm concerned about the noise. I'm concerned about the crime that that would bring developing that area. And also, we have drainage issues. Each homeowner in the twelve zero lot lines there has had flooding in their homes, and so we've had some major drainage issues there. And I know that the property across the street is in part of a floodplain. And I know, as Todd mentioned, the Country Club was concerned about that as well. I was also concerned that, based on the plan that we were shown, both ingress and egress were on Country Club. I don't know why we have to take the burden of that. So those are my concerns. I do know that there was mention to us that we could talk with them about some restrictive covenants. Based on the plot that we were shown, there would be a twenty-two thousand square foot building that when I walked out my front door, that's what I would be looking at the back of. There've been rumors of all kinds of things, of there being a grocery store. I don't wanna look at dumpsters. I don't want to have something across the street that's gonna be going on eighteen hours a day. The lights, the noise, the traffic again, and the other things that that brings. So I, in my profession, I'm a consultant, and I have to compromise as well. But I've lived in a planned community when I lived in Nashville, so I'm very well aware of that. You knew what you were getting into, and when I purchased my home, it was zoned residential across the street. So I can't pick my house up and move it, but I do know, speaking with several different realtors, looking at the data, that it will affect our property value, and I'm not sure that it will be in the positive. So I would ask that you take that into consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
It's very distressing to know that you've purchased something, and, you know, you're gonna see it lose its value based on what you really don't know is gonna be across the street and how it's gonna affect you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I can round out page one of our public comment, is Doris Ransom.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
My name is Doris Ransom, and I wanted to speak about the idea of closing up Hayes and Lane. Hayes is a very narrow street. The thing about it is, if two cars going north and south on Hayes causes problems, it's tight. And when you come out of the parking lot of Shaw Funeral Home, it's hard for you to go, you know, either way you wanna go. And so my thing is that I think it's unfair for them to want to close that. The streets have been like that for, before they tried to close it, for many years, you know? And I don't see the need. I know that they wanna protect the children, or the students, but they are adults. And they know that if there's a car coming, you don't run across the street, you stop and you wait. That's what you teach your children, you know? And I think it's unfair for them to do this. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Alan Castleman.
Good morning, Council and Mayor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Alan Castleman. I am a real estate agent, practicing broker in the area for over sixteen years. Have experience in all different types of real estate, whether it's commercial, or retail, or residential. Been involved in developments and understand zoning. So just sharing some of my perspective from my professional view. Then the next aspect that I wanted to introduce is I am a resident of Country Club Lane. So when I came home and saw the trees coming down on the corner, I learned about that development just like everybody else did. I looked up on my app, who owns that property? I saw the developer. I said, "Hey, I know that guy." I text him, and I said, "What's going on?" That's how I learned about it. But I am a resident. I drive by that every day. I try to run by that every day. It's kinda more like a fast walk. But I'm also a Jackson Country Club member. So I have several perspectives about that corner. Obviously, I'm sorry, we're talking about Country Club Lane, Van Drive rezoning. I fully support that. And the residents and the club do have some concerns, and they are real. And some of those are my concerns, too. But the way these developments work is we get the correct zoning so that the developers can then work their project. And just like I believe Julie mentioned in that, the due diligence comes into play that talks about traffic study, noise, ordinance. I might be, I'm not sure about the noise, but I know traffic and drainage and all those things. There are systems in place to address those. Also, I think the character of the developers has a lot to do with it. I know them very well. I've worked with them on and off for years, and I believe they're gonna do the right thing for that corner. So the reason I'm here is because it's easy to come up here and oppose something. It's kinda hard to come up here in front of all your neighbors and friends and clients and support it. But the reason I support it is it's the wrong zone. This is a zoning vote. We have a property that's on Van Drive that's zoned residential. I can't imagine any of you would ask any of your constituents one question. Is Van Drive the right place for residential homes? It's just a no-brainer. The answer should be no. It's a retail corridor. Now, this is a triangle property, so it's very unique. One side fronts a commercial traffic area of Van Drive. One side fronts Country Club Lane, great residential community, very quiet. And the other side fronts Jackson Country Club. Five million dollar investment in the club. It's gonna be exciting for the city. There's no way that we can have one zone, in my opinion, that satisfies all three of those triangles. So I think mixed use is the right zone. These guys have a great plan. I think we should support them.
Thank you, Mr. Castleman.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Terry Spearman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Of course, my name is Terry Spearman, and the reason I'm here is to, my concern is about the closing of Lane Avenue. And as we all know, everybody can't, all these constituents back here just stay in that area. It's a big concern there, so that's something that needs to be really addressed. I can't even imagine that artery being closed for whatever reason. Now, from my understanding, it was something about the protection of the students. Protect them of what? And if so, you having a doubt to prove of any kind of deterrence against why the streets should be closed? Do you understand that there's two dorms on La Can? If you're so concerned about the students, you want to close La Can as well? Think so. That, again, that avenue is vital, period, just like Mr. Shaw mentioned. Don't wanna throw him up on the bus, but it's real. If nobody, if anybody does not know anything about that area, and you need to come to, say, Bless All Funeral Home, and if Lane Avenue is closed, you putting your GPS in your head up in Mississippi 'cause you don't know where to go, all them twists and turn, all that stuff like that. That's a main order, a main artery. And to close it, now, again, the speed bumps, I get that for the traffic to slow it down. I get that. It is, I mean, that helps. But to close it down, then you got businesses around there, like Shaw Funeral Home, as well as Bless All Churches. I mean, and again, if all these, these constituents, these people that live on that area, it's against it, I think you all should be, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spearman. Am I correct that Brenda Brown didn't have to come up now? Okay, all right. All right, next up, we have Robert Gibson.
My name is Corporal Robert L. Gibson, Jr., Marine Corps, Vietnam Vet.
Good morning.
I live on, right now, I still serve as an honor guard, Jack Holland, Marine Corps, lady. But I live on Lee Street, one fifty-four D. Me and my wife on Lee Street, all the way back to the land on three thirty-three D. I go to Macedonia Baptist Church, and a lot of my members, when they leave Macedonia, have to go up lane to go back out north and everywhere. But one of the problems is, when you get up on Milton and Lane, it's a stop sign there, about three hundred feet up, before you go down lane. Lane Avenue going down toward our church, it's real narrow in there. If you don't stop coming up, people's coming off going down, you don't have no room in there for nobody to turn. And a lot of time, they get up to the stop, get up to the end of the street, they have to back back in order for a car to turn. The only time you get a break in there to make your move to go where you wanna go is when a car turned down Lane Avenue. If you don't turn down Lane Avenue, you'll be stuck there for a while. But if somebody turn down lane, then you can go. And that's all I have to say, and you gentlemen have a good day. Richard Donnell, his bee will save my life in Vietnam.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Alex Holman.
Morning, Council.
Good morning.
Mayor Conner. So as we all know, you know, obviously, we're talking about the Country Club Lane Van Drive here. We're wanting to do high-end golf villas in the rear, and we believe that our rezoning request to get the frontage of Van Drive rezoned commercial is very reasonable, you know, considering that we've got the only piece on Van Drive, it's a four-and-a-half mile stretch of road that's, and we've got the only piece that's not zoned commercial on Van Drive. So I do, I do wanna remind everybody of that. We do, I wanna make some comments on Todd about what he spoke about earlier. We do agree with Todd that there's a drainage concern over there at the Country Club, and we've toured that with him, we've looked at that with him. We want to come to a solution with them, and we've got a handshake agreement. We just don't have that signed and finalized yet. That was sent to us pretty late last night, or kind of in the morning, and we just, we just don't have that finalized. As far as pushing it thirty days, I'd almost leave that up to you guys. We're tired, you know, we're ready to get this thing done. But at the same time, we do want them to be partners, and we're gonna be partners with them either way. I mean, Colin and I are good people, and we're gonna do what works for us and the Country Club at the same time.
Let me stop you a minute and just ask you this.
Yes, sir.
Don't give him, don't take away his time.
I'll pause it when you start.
Just to cut it down, the gentleman that came forth earlier said that you all had made an agreement, and you might be in agreement with him to postpone it thirty days. I'm ready to deal with it today, but I wanna know, are you willing to postpone it thirty days? Is that an agreement that you all have? Because if you do have that agreement, I'll go with it, but if you don't, I'm ready to do it today.
Yeah, we, I mean, if that's, if that, I don't know how the rules work with the council. If that's something that we need to do, and it kinda sounds like-
No, you don't have to. Just ask my question. Are you, are you in agreement with him to postpone it thirty days? That's all I want to know, is either yes or no.
Yes, if that's what they want, we're in agreement with that.
I want to remind Council that this is rezoning, so it does take two readings.
It does.
So, the first reading will still take thirty days for it to be finalized.
So, it would be thirty days anyway if we voted yes.
Yeah, because there's a second vote, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Oh, we get to go, Conner on the, okay. All right, so I don't want to focus on that the whole time because there's other neighbors over there, not just the Country Club. We, we've, you know, not to beat a dead horse, but the concerns are traffic, drainage, you know, things like that, locations of the buildings. That site plan that got sent out is not final, guys. We're, that's, that was just sent to get this rezoning done. We don't know what the size of the building is going to be. We don't know exactly what it's going to look like yet. Like Alan said, we need to get this rezoned to be able to work on it. We've had complaints about the site, the way it looks right now. We didn't mean for it to look like it does right now on purpose. We're going to get that cleaned up. The logging guys came in and made a mess and we're on the waitlist for our, for our guy to come back and get that cleaned up and that'll happen within the next couple of weeks. But at the, at the end of the day, we think we've got a good plan for this property. We'd like to get it rezoned considering it's the only piece on Van Drive that's not, that's not commercial. And I do want to bring up what Trey Kleek had said earlier as well. It, it does provide good tax revenue. Right now, it's bringing in virtually zero dollars a year for the city and rezoned commercial, you'll get sales tax, property tax. It's a big deal. We understand there's opposition from what we think is a, kind of a minority. We've got a hundred thousand people living in Jackson and five or six people that are kind of upset about this. We, we, we believe what we're doing is best for Jackson and best for the city and think that...
What we'll do is when the item comes back up, the Council, I'm sure we'll have questions and then we can call it.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Colin Miller.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here to talk about the 191 Van Drive. I'm one of the developers, which I'm in favor of the rezon and we have had a lot of meetings with the, the Country Club and the neighbors over there and we're, we are close, as Todd said, we are close to getting an agreement reached on that. It's just our legal counsel didn't have time to review it and feel comfortable with us signing it, so. But, but some of the thing in the meetings that we, we did discuss was there was concerns with the townhomes on Country Club and, and one of the things that was brought up was a building a brick wall to hide the commercial and we were willing to do that. So, we're willing to work with the neighbors and the Country Club to do whatever it needs to make that a nice development. If we didn't want it to be a nice development, there'd already be duplexes started on it because really that, that is a better cash flow for us is building the duplexes. So, but we want to take care of the community and be nice to the community and try to build something to be proud of for the Jackson because we do a lot in Jackson, so we don't want to be known as the slum lords of Jackson over there. So, just try to keep our, keep it going and so, so anything that, you know, retaining walls or storm drain studies, anything like that, we'll be glad to do and, and any questions, we'd like to answer them.
So, we've got, well, Council, you've got a question, we reserve those for Mr. Holman, Mr. Miller, when that agenda item comes up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Henry Poe. Okay. Better read that right? All right. And Joyce Owens?
Hello.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Joyce Owens and I live on Seventeen Green, which is a very close neighbor to 191 Van Drive. And of course, we know it's going to go commercial at some point, but our biggest concern is the unknown because we cannot get any real definite ideas of what will be there. And we've heard everything from big grocery stores that will be accessed, from Country Club Lane, which could be a nightmare. But we are willing to, you know, of course, we know progressive, I mean, progression is inevitable and we're willing to, you know, work with anybody that will help us with that. And these developers have said they will do that. And matter of fact, in my recent conversations with Alex Holman, he has said that they would be willing to put restrictive covenants, our deed restrictions in, indeed, that would help protect our interest as far as limiting what could be put there. But that it was just not enough time before this meeting to do that. So, I come here today to ask you to please postpone this meeting because after, if it is rezoned, then there goes the incentive, you know, because a property with less restrictions has more value to more people, especially if it's sold. So, I would just ask that, you know, we have everything in writing as to what, what is, we can expect to be put there to protect our property values and our neighborhood. And I believe these developers are honorable and will do that. But being in the real estate business for almost thirty years, I know that if something is not in writing, it's not enforceable. So, I just ask you to please consider postponing the request today so that that can be achieved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just got notified that Mr. Poe is back in, so Henry Poe?
I'd like to say good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Henry Poe and I'm a business owner in the city of Jackson and I'm here concerned to close your Lane Avenue and I agree to disagree with the other clients of the closing of Lane Avenue. We as our business, we use that as an east-west thruway for East Jackson. I'm also a member of Macedonia Baptist Church, which you use Lane Avenue. And this is not good for the community. If you ever drive through that way and go up Orchard, you'll find there's not enough, I mean, people park on the streets there, so that thruway is not a good route to go. And I've been a resident of the city of Jackson for over sixty years, but we need to reconsider this and as Brother Buchanan said a while, when he was council member, it's not a good thing to do for the community. So, we're here to support our clients. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Poe. All right, next on the list is Marshall Moss. Okay, just signed it. Okay, all right. Thank you. Next we have Jeb Vaughn.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Jeb Vaughn. I am a resident on Country Club. I'm also a local designer and been here in Jackson since ninety-two. So, first of all, I want to say that the last thing I am is opposed to development. And I do agree with Mr. Castleman's statement and the property owner that it is a good concept to include commercial development on this property and be of benefit to the city of Jackson from a tax revenue basis. But I think that in consideration of area residents and others who have a concern about how this property is developed and how they might be protected from visual or light overflow onto their properties or be of, what they might perceive as a nuisance to how the property is developed, that in consideration of how to develop the property, if we can develop something that is mutually beneficial to all the area residents or other commercial developments, that it would be a good thing as well as continue to provide the tax incentive to the developer to provide that service or that business or businesses in the commercial component for the city's tax revenue benefit. So, that's basically all I want to say is that in my business, there's always more than one way to solve a design problem. And what I put in front of you is a concept that I have provided to the developer. He can share his thoughts with you as he shared with me, but it's just put out there for consideration about how to maybe provide some residential development along Country Club so that residential is facing residential and that the existing residential is generally screened or protected from the concerns that they have about a commercial building more close to Country Club, even though a screen wall might be built along Country Club. There hadn't been any talk about how tall the wall might be compared to how tall the building is going to be so that if the, if the screen wall is six feet, but the building wall is twenty feet, then you're still looking at commercial building wall and maybe the rooftop air conditioning units on top of that, other light poles that might have overspill into the residential area. And, you know, so it's just those kind of concerns that designers think about and try to resolve and address as we solve a design problem. That's all I want to share. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank, last on the list, I don't know if we're signing in, but Jake Winters? Signing in, would you speak? Okay, all right. Well, that concludes public comment. And then we'll move on to first reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of eleven thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-six cents for JPD unit twenty-two sixty-two total loss.
Motion, second.
Motion is second. Discussion from Council. Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item two is proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of seventeen thousand five hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-three cents for JPD unit twenty-one twenty-eight for repairs plus tow bill for one hundred dollars.
Motion, second.
And the motion is second. Discussion from Council. Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item three is proposed budget amendment to recognize the AARP Community Challenge Grant for twenty thousand dollars for Office of Innovation.
Go ahead, Frank. Motion now, second. The only one stalking.
Second. You made the motion, I made the second.
There you go.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass six to twelve seconds.
No, no. So, let's wait, let's, let's hold the vote until Marquesha calls it.
Motion pass eight to zero.
All right, thank you. Item four is proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of thirteen thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirteen cents for JPD unit twenty-two seventy-two for repairs.
So moved.
Motion is second. Heard the discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item five, consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at 191 Van Drive from RG-1 General Residential District to SC-1 planning, planned unit commercial development district comprising five point zero three acres, more or less.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have in your packet the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. It was presented to the June Planning Commission, meet, at the June Planning Commission meeting and they failed to reach an affirmative vote and so, under their bylaws, any motion that's not in the affirmative becomes a denial. So, that's why you received a recommendation of denial with that rezoning. Also, there was some mention in the public comment about the acreage of the property. Our zone lines run down the centers of roads, so we include the right-of-way that abuts the rezoning request, so that's why there's additional acreage included in that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
We have questions from Council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Stan, could you speak to the due diligence that would be, be involved with any type of development regarding traffic, stormwater and other concerns?
Yes, sir. When we are reviewing the development, first, it must get through the rezoning process. If it doesn't get through the rezoning process, of course, there's no development for us to review. Once the rezoning has taken place and, and let's just, let me just say that there's any site plan that's presented to you during the rezoning request is not, is not required by us, but they can include it if they want to. As they move through the development process, we will require a traffic study. That traffic study will look at the impact of that development and look at the uses that will be associated with that development and it will propose whatever improvements are necessary to mitigate that traffic. Also, we require the developer cement hydraulic studies that shows how they'll deal with the stormwater associated with the development. So, all the concerns that people have are our concerns too. We don't want to put in a development that's going to cause flooding. We also are concerned about traffic also. That's why we do the traffic studies so that we can address the traffic concerns. So, that is a part of our development process and that will be done as it moves through that process if the zoning takes place.
Councilman Lawrence?
Go ahead.
Council Stovall and Lawrence.
My question has to do with the, so this is, of course, first reading, have to go to the second reading. That automatically gives us another thirty days, in my opinion, would be no need to table this because you automatically get another thirty days. In that thirty-day period, and this may be illegal, can they make any adjustments to the agreements that they've, for example, what they were talking about earlier in regards to changing how they were going to do it?
Anything that, yeah, anything that the developer wants to negotiate with the property owners, I heard mention of covenants, that the property owner can place covenants on their property and if they want to come to some agreement on how they develop the property, of course, they can do that.
So, they're within their right to, to do that during that thirty days?
Yes, because all this, all this that we're talking about is the zoning part of it.
Right.
So, we're not really even talking about the site plan, what uses are allowed on the track. Any of those things aren't really...
So, tabling is kind of a moot point.
It doesn't address any of those things that they're talking about right now. The rezoning is what's being presented to you. It's whether it's appropriate for a commercial zoning or not.
Got you. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Lawrence.
My question is for the property owners, do they have any problem with us passing it on first reading today, knowing that we've got to do it again thirty days from now?
Well, it's not effective till second reading. So, if you, if you pass it on first reading and then something happens and, and the conditions change and you bring it up on second reading, you don't have to approve it on second reading and it doesn't get approved.
Councilman Reholt?
I just, I think that we're setting kind of a bad precedent when we're, when we go to table it for an individual to have an agreement with the business. All we're doing here is we're not saying this is what the design is. We're not saying this is what it's going to be, but we're saying that this, we're changing the zoning. A lot of people talked about their property value being affected by this. In reality, that's not apples to apples. You can't take a single-family home and compare it to commercial. There will be new homes behind it which would in turn help their property value. I, I think that we need to go ahead as a council and move with our first vote today because that still gives them thirty days to tie up any of their loose ends. Come back and then Mr. Siroki can say, hey, look, we did come to this agreement or hey, we didn't. And then as a council, we can go, we can go forward and say, no, then we're not going to move this way if you can't or yes, we are. I think that we've tabled it once and for some reason, it seems like council gets a little antsy from public pressure when it's time for these hot topics to be voted on and kicking the can down the road is not going to help us and why not get this rolling? So, if they do come to an agreement, we're quicker to getting revenue back into the city.
Actually, I think we're about to move into discussion. So, before we move into discussion, we'll need a motion to second to get it...
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All right, now we're in discussion. Discussion from Council.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the, one of the things that concerns me, and again, thank you to all those who showed up, shared your opinions. I share your concerns about the property. I, however, place a lot of trust in Stan and the rest of our planning and engineering to make sure that the studies and execution of any plan is done correctly. My big fear is that if the commercial zoning does not move forward, then that piece of property will turn into a sea of duplexes. And with all due respect, there is a need for affordable housing in our community. However, in a commercial district with some beautiful neighborhoods and beautiful homes back around behind it, I don't think a sea of duplexes fits the aesthetic or the use of that particular area. I would rather us not leave it open for them to proceed with that, that big residential development because I don't think it comes anywhere close to fitting what is already there.
And then, Council, any further discussion from Council?
I have a question. Good morning, Mr. Pilot.
Good morning.
There's not, because we're, you're going to do all the research, traffic study, there's not any guarantee that they could have that, the egress, hindrance, it could all be on Van Drive.
Well, again, we're not reviewing a development plan, so until they shape one, until they submit it for our review, we don't know what, what direction that'll take because the traffic study will dictate some of those aspects, the, the hydraulic study will affect some of those. Right now, again, we're just dealing with the zoning part of it.
Do you feel, my second question is, do you feel, and I'll just be clear, I think Van Drive is commercial, said that earlier. Do you feel on Country Club Lane, though, it can hold the large, say, five-ton trucks or would there be something done to be able to support that business but limit the large trucks going through or down the neighborhood section because it's kind of a narrow road?
I mean, it's a public streets right now, so that public street can be used by whatever vehicle wants to use it. I mean, we don't, we do have some streets that do have weight limits, but in this case...
I'm not trying to ask the Councilman's question for her. I think, are you referring to the traffic study, any improvements for that?
Right, right. If there would ever be, because I don't want to say what or speculate what type of business... Right, right. If there would ever be, because I don't want to say what or speculate what type of business, but I'm just thinking down the road to large trucks. I've had a neighborhood that large trucks go through and I get a lot of calls about it.
May I offer an idea to that point? Something we've done in other residential areas is basically outlawed certain sized trucks. So I think depending on how this development would move forward, it may be appropriate at some point in the future to offer a resolution limiting the weight class of vehicles that could go into the residential side of Country Club.
We do on a portion. I don't know if it goes all the way or not. I know there's a portion of Country Club on from four twelve side that has a weight limit on it. I don't know if it ends at the bypass or goes further. But again, all those are considerations that we can take and look at when, when that development plan comes forward. Because again, when a development plan is submitted, we look at things like where the service trucks are coming, where they're, where they're servicing. All those things are a part of our review. So again, once we get to that point, we can definitely look at those things.
Now finish my last.
Yeah, go ahead.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman Stovall. At the end of the street right now, Country Club is closed off. Would there be a possibility because of the increased traffic that that could be looked at and open that up?
I think that's more like Pandora's box. I don't think, again, the, the reason for closing that street at the time was, was because of Walmart and the development of Walmart and Sam's. And that was sort of a consideration and a concession that was made. And I don't see any reason to revisit that. Because again, you open that up, you're opening it up to a lot of traffic that's not related to this development that just wants to get from point A to point B. So they don't really, to me, they don't fit or don't link together. I, I mean, I don't think the developer, you know, if they propose something like that, that would be sort of out of the realm of, of what we would review. Because it's, it's not, it's not, it's apples and oranges.
I think we need to be somewhat realistic on the traffic flow out there because like I live in colonies at Raleigh. So if I was leaving colonies at Raleigh and I was going to this commercial development, I'm going to hit Highland. Or I'm going to go down the road where Chick-fil-A and all that is and hang back. Or, I mean, so I don't, I think the people that are going to be traveling that end of Country Club are going to be the people who are already traveling it every single day. Most people are going to get to Van or they're going to get to Highland and get to Van before they cut through.
Given that most commercial traffic is going to be coming from the bypass or Highland, the street's closed on the bypass side. Country Club through that section is very narrow and Van Drive is, is a more appropriate path. So I just don't see trucks seeing a benefit to trying to navigate Country Club. So, but again, those are things that are, are sort of, are within the realm of what we look at. But not so much whether Country Club would be open or not.
I know we started, we started down the topic of having questions for the developers' property owners. Are there any questions for them? Do you want to bring them back up? No, okay. I just want to make sure. Want to give everybody the opportunity to ask the questions they wanted to.
I have a question.
Yes.
I see two opposing groups, neighborhood, developers. But I, I see them today being very close to making a decision. And that's, that's a nice move. I don't understand why we're, we may be seeming to be opposed to letting them discuss this for, for thirty days before we even make our first decision.
Well.
They still have thirty days.
Because they still have thirty days.
You're kicking the can down the road. They still have thirty days to come back and say, okay, we didn't make or we didn't. And we've already, they tabled it once already. So now we've gone from thirty days to then it's going to sixty days to ninety days.
This would be a statement of privilege.
No, what I'm asking is that we give them the opportunity to work this out without just like rushing them into something.
I'll, I'll give you an observation. And again, this is not an.
Stand up and come to you. Go ahead, go ahead, stand up and come to council.
Yeah, I'll give you an observation. It sounded like to me, hearing the people discuss it today, that the agreement has to do with how the development develops. It wasn't really a question of whether it was appropriate for commercial or not. It was a question of what can we do in terms of limiting certain uses on the property? What can we do to orient the property a certain way or access points? And all those are things that relate to the development of the property which come after a rezoning takes place. So again, I don't know that, you know, postponing it helps that at all because that comes after it's effective. And so if it doesn't ever get effective, those things won't be considered. And if it does become effective, we'll address those things as it goes forward, so.
Councilman Stovall?
Well, two things. One, as Mr. Cleek said, and I come from the same kind of thought process of as a conservative, I believe in limited government. And I don't think that we should, within reason, dictate to people what they can and can't do on their property within reason. Number two, I think we've been really good at, as a council, at delaying and deferring and delaying and deferring. We didn't want to raise taxes, so we didn't, we didn't do that. Now we have a great opportunity for increased revenue where we're not getting any, little to any revenue off of that land right now. And now we're considering not doing that. So I, for me, I'm ready to vote and, you know, but we can continue discussion. But I think it's, I think this would be a good thing.
All right, any, any further discussion? Council please vote.
Five and three, three no.
Motion passes five to three.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Stan. Move on to second reading. Item one is proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of thirteen thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and twenty-four cents for JPD unit twenty-two sixty-two inappropriate for repairs.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Council please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item two is consideration, excuse me, of a plan of service, proposed annexation and zoning for an area referred to as Sunshine Areas one and two. Comprising area one, fifty-six point nine three more or less. Area two, fifteen point sixteen acres more or less located area one. North of Hartsfield Drive, area two, west of Wesley Drive. The proposed zoning is RS two, single family residential district.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Further discussion? Council please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item three is consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located at area one, Hedgefield and Castle Gate Drive. And area two, the twenty-seven sixty block of Christmasville Road from RS one, single family residential district to RS two, single family residential district comprising of twenty point four nine. Area one and nine point six nine, area two, acres more or less.
So move.
And motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Council please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item four is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance of the city of Jackson, Tennessee. Article five, specific district regulations, section three, RS one, D two, a relative, D two A relative to RS one.
Motion.
And motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Council please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to amend the text of the official zoning ordinance to the city of Jackson, Tennessee. Article five, specific district regulations, section four, RS two, D two A relative to RS two.
Motion.
You have a motion?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? Council please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item five is consideration of an ordinance to close and abandon a portion of Lane Avenue between North Hayes and Middleton Street.
So move.
Second.
You have a motion is second. Further discussion from council?
Yes, I have some discussion. I'd like to ask Dr. Coleman some questions, please.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Dr. Coleman.
Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, fans. Let me ask some questions about the, the closing of these two blocks of Lane. I've heard an individual today come up, I think I've heard two, and I've heard some other rumors in the community. From the, from the ordinance that you, that you, that Lane College is requesting is to block a portion of Lane Avenue between North Hayes and Middleton Street. But I've heard some people thinking and saying that a portion of Hayes Avenue and a portion of Middleton Street would also be closed. Is there any truth to that?
No, it, it, the area that we're asking to be closed will begin at the corner of Lane Avenue and Hayes Avenue and would go to the intersection of Middleton and, and Lane Avenue.
Okay, so Middleton Street would be completely clear.
Yes.
And persons who are going either north and south on Hayes Avenue would be able to get to Lane Avenue and make a left going down Lane Avenue.
Absolutely.
All right. The request to close this area, is it, why is it necessary? Is it cosmetic or is it necessary?
The, the ask is primarily to ensure the safety of students. There's a lot of traffic that goes down there and up until a few months ago, there was not even a speed bump there. We've installed a speed bump, but the traffic still tends to be at, at a, a speed that makes it unsafe for students. The campus has primary facilities on both sides, classrooms on the, the north side and dining services and another set of dormitories on the north side, the south side, I'm sorry. North side is where the classes are. So student movement across the two sections is hampered by the traffic and we're looking to increase safety for our students.
Just want to make one clarification. Lane College did not install the speed bumps. I don't want people thinking they should go install speed bumps on streets. The city installed the, the speed bumps.
All right. And I don't know if we have our other visual items here tonight. Do you have a, a rendering of what the Lane Plaza would look like?
I do.
While he's passing those out, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. This may be for you, it may be for Stan. This is the second reading, so the first reading, we passed this. When this happened, were notices would have been sent out, correct, to? Because we didn't hear anything really on first reading, so notices would have been sent out then. My question, you know, why didn't we hear from citizens then?
I, I asked that, I asked that question after it was brought to my attention. I asked that same question. And I was told, I think by Mr. Pallett, but maybe it was someone else, I don't know who it was. But I was told that the ordinance requires notices to be sent out to persons who live on the particular street that's to be closed.
Yes, sir. They, they, the, the way the closure and abandonment process works, anyone that's affected by the section that's being closed and is, is notified. Lane College owned property on both sides of that, that section of street. So they were the only property owner and since they were the petitioner, they, that's the reason why there wouldn't any notices. Now, the public hearing, which is what we had at first reading, is, is where that, that information is, is presented and, and people have the ability to weigh in there. Or in the second reading, like today, where they weighed in.
Thank you.
Stan, before you go, hearing the residents' concerns about traffic flow and ambulances and fire trucks and, do you have concerns with this being closed?
Well, I have a, a letter from the police department and the fire department that both said they were in support. So I go off the people, they're the experts, and they said they didn't see a problem with the closure.
I want to address that as well. When this came up, I had a concern as well because I know people who live in the area have to have emergency services, have to have police, fire, and EMS. I personally talked to the fire chief and I talked to the, to the chief of police. And I asked them, if this was closed, would it delay any type of service being given to the person, to the residents of East Jackson? They assured me that it would not. And then I pressed them on that because I couldn't understand why wouldn't it? You know, this is a major thoroughfare. And they told me that they had included and compiled methods of getting to everybody, anywhere they need to get into the city of, of Jackson. And have taken all closures into consideration on their plans of ingress and egress. They assured me of that. And then when I went further and they wrote those letters and put it in the file assuring the council that that would not occur, then I was somewhat more satisfied with it on that.
Before we get step further, I think I, when I, we got to the agenda, I think I called it item five. It is item six. Just want to clarify that for the record.
But you're, you're saying that it would not. You pressed them on it.
Yeah, I pressed, they assured me that it would not.
Other questions, Councilman?
Well, I, I'm a cheer to Lane on. I love Lane. And Lane is in my district and the people of Lane. But I have concerns that, that the community has reacted. And Stan, do you see any, with the, the concerns of the traffic flow and people trying to get somewhere? That that would present a problem as they mentioned this? Has it changed the traffic flow of that portion around Lane?
Well, anytime you close a portion of a street that's been used for, for many years, there's going to be changes in traffic flow. I mean, that's, that's just understandable. But again, we went off what public safety told us from a traffic flow standpoint. Because that's, again, a lot of the concerns, the people were, were related to public safety. But there were some that were related to traffic. Now, again, there are other segments of streets in the, in the, in the neighborhoods that can, that can get between these two streets other than Lane. Because again, Lane's not being closed the entire way. It's only being closed between Middleton and Hayes. So again, I rely on the people that do this every day and, and they say there's not a problem.
Some of the concerns about the wide, that the streets are not wide enough, can we, can the city address those in any way to make that?
Well, again, I think some of the, the things they were concerned about is people that park on the street, that it's, that it's, you know, it creates a narrow travel lane. But, you know, we found in cases like that, it can be a traffic calming aspect of it because, you know, if it's not wide open, then people have to slow down to navigate. But again, I understand the concerns because when you do close a street that's been used heavily for the, for many years, there are going to be some changes in traffic patterns.
Councilman Lawrence?
I came in here today thinking this was a no-brainer. And I'm like, Frank, with the outpouring here, I've got some questions. How many, do you have a rough estimate, how many cars would be diverted?
I have no idea. Again, what people choose to do, once something is not available to them, they can choose multiple paths. So I have no way of determining how many, how.
Right, we could, we could go over to Lane, this place right now and count how many cars go through. And we will know that those numbers are going to be diverted. I'd like to know that information. Like I said, I thought this is a no-brainer. And then we've got three hundred or more residents that are complaining. I think we might want to give a little more attention.
My, my question on that would be, if, if you vote no, then it automatically fails. We were already in a second reading, so that, you know.
That's, that's a problem. We could go to Julie's favorite thing, table it.
I actually, that's not me, that's you. I've never tabled a thing.
That was Booze from Sixers.
Is there any way we could get the, get the image of the planned closure, pop it back up on the screen so the concerned citizens could get a look at what the actual proposal is? Because what I'm looking at, Hayes and Milton remain unencumbered. It's simply a section of Lane Avenue that is completely adjacent to the college itself. Well, it's heavily used by foot traffic as well.
We've had, we've had public comment already. Thank you.
So basically, you see on the map, the area that's in yellow is the part of Lane, the segment of Lane that's being proposed to be closed. The North Hayes is, is on the, would be on the west side and Middleton would be on the east side. And you can see that the closure stops beyond the intersection. So the intersection at Hayes still is open. Then the closure of Lane goes east toward Middleton. And when you get to Middleton, it stops short of Middleton, which means Middleton is still open also. So it does not affect the, those streets.
Mr. Plant, no one lives in that yellow area, correct?
That is an area that's within the campus.
Okay, so it would not affect residential at all then?
It, it really isn't. That's, I mean, that's the main concern that Lane has is it's, you know, they're the property on both sides and, and it goes through their campus. And, and they want to control how the traffic flow enters and, and leaves their campus.
Sure. When Lane ends perpendicular on Middleton, that, that building, you see the round, the parking lot and all that, is that also Lane?
Yeah, the tower JEA, the building in Saint Paul.
So it's commercial.
So.
That's a church.
Is anybody here on, from those?
No, they didn't speak.
Okay.
So, uh, to the south of Lane, remind me how you would get from North Hayes to Middleton?
Uh.
Is there a straight shot or are we going through?
Well, there's.
Orchard.
The Orchard is the next street, east to west.
Okay.
So you would cut down Hayes, go down Orchard.
Uh, and then there's some other streets south of there that go east to west.
Is there any further discussion?
I wanted to say that doing, weighing this thing, I understand what the residents are saying. That, uh, you know, it's, it's, it's easy to go from wherever to wherever, east to west by going through Lane College. I understand that. I understand what the president of Lane College is saying, that he has students there, that, uh, it's heavy traffic. I've, uh, seen people speed through there and all those kinds of things. So to me and my mind, it comes to a point of weighing, uh, safety versus convenience. Uh, it's, it's, it's convenient to go through Lane, at Lane College's campus to get to where you're going. That's convenient. But then you have to look at the safety factor as well, of safety of the, the students who are involved. Now, let me say this too, because I need to put this on the record. I said it first time, so I want to say it this time too. Uh, I am an employee of Lane College. And so therefore I, uh, point that out, uh, prior to any vote regarding a conflict of interest. I want to put that out for the record. Also, I found out in any position where you're involved in, on a city council, whatever, there's a difference between advocating and governing. When you are not elected and you advocate for a position, you just go, just go for that position only. But when you start, when you elected, you have to govern. And you have to look at both sides of an issue and see how it affects all people rather than one particular set of people. So I understand what the residents are saying. I understand what Lane College is saying. And in my looking at this, I'm going to, to, uh, weigh the safety versus convenience in the way that I, I look at this issue. I've asked.
We've already, we've already had public comment. You've, you've had your chance to be heard.
Okay, that, that's okay. I don't, I don't mind. I think that's democracy in, in action.
Also meeting the core rules.
But, uh, but at any rate, uh, in weighing those two things is what I, I look at, uh, safety versus convenience. And, um, I think the citizens being here today to, to voice their opinions on what should be done. But when I hear the chief of police and the EMS director and the fire director say that this would not affect them getting to the people that I represent if they have an emergency, that weighs heavy on my mind too as to how I would, I would vote on the position. So that's, that's all I have.
Councilman Lawrence?
I agree with that, safety versus inconvenience. But the neighborhood, that safety might be at risk also. And I say might be at risk because I don't know. But if you could tell me how many cars are going to be diverted and sent through it, then I would have something to make a decision on it. If it's 10 or 15 cars a day, it's no big deal. If it's a thousand, it's a big deal. And I don't know the answer to that.
I can say it's more than 10 or 15.
Any further discussion from council?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to help Ms., uh, Councilman Donnell, that I think he's referring to the safety of the students, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any additional discussion? Council, please vote.
Seven to one, up saying.
All right. Move on to new business. Item one's consideration of a street acceptance request for columns three, section three, lot one, and right-of-way dedication.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item two's consideration of a contract with MSB Construction LLC for renovations at the JTA Transfer Center.
Motion.
Second, a motion to second. Discussion from council?
I have a question here. In the, in the, uh, in the work session, uh, it came up that we would need to, to use, uh, to go to fund balance to fund this. Is that, is that correct? Was I told that, is what we said? Mr. Reed?
I don't know why you were sitting so comfortable there.
Just trying to. This will require a budget amendment, uh, and right now the source of funding we have for that is the fund balance.
Okay, that's what I want to ask you. I'm not an accountant and I don't know how that stuff works. But could this money, if we have money in another budget item that probably will not be used until, say, May of next year, could that money be transferred here so that we could use it here? And then replenish the line item where we borrowed it from? Can that be done or is that a good policy or bad policy?
Uh, it can, uh, because as you know, money is fungible. It pours like water. Uh, the, um, the thing is, we know that at the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year, uh, we will probably need the money that we transferred. And so, uh, if we did that, that we would still need that money at the end of that year. And so, uh, just good practice is to go ahead and fund what you're, what you're going to purchase or what you're going to spend the money on when it happens. Now, uh, as we talked about in that work session, we're not exactly sure what the timeline of this is going to be. And, uh, I would advocate probably doing these budget amendments somewhat piecemeal because we don't know what's going to fall into this fiscal year and what's going to fall into next fiscal year. Uh, but other than that, that's, that's basically, does that answer your question, Councilman?
Yeah, you answered, you said, you said we could do it.
Okay.
That's what you said, right?
Yeah, oh yeah.
I mean, you said it in a roundabout way, but that's what you said.
You guys can do anything, you guys can do pretty much what you want, but yes.
Okay.
What?
Yeah, well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just want to say we do not want to get in the habit of this, one. But two, we don't want to take this money of something that we've already passed in the budget and that's where we think it needs to go and know that it needs to go. So it does get confusing when we're really trying to watch our dollars and. And then we've got a hundred thousand dollars that we can go towards this. So just for the record, I just want to say, I know we were in a growing phase and I hundred thousand percent respect you and what you're doing. But I hope we're not going to be doing more of this because it is quite confusing.
Well, I mean, I, you know, I would advocate if you are going to, um, if you're going to fund this, uh, that you do it in a very straightforward way as opposed to doing a budget transfer. That way you know what you're doing. It's clear what you've done as, because then you may come back to May next year and say, well, why don't we have the money in this other line? Well, don't you remember we moved that over here for?
Yeah, but that was, that was when we would then take it out of fund balance. I'm just trying to delay messing with fund balance as long as we can. Hopefully that revenue will come in to where we wouldn't have to do that at all.
That's our hope as well.
I think, Councilman, to your point, if, if the, the budget amendment would just be that a budget amendment, what we actually spend would be reflected at the end of the year when, when we actually spend, not what we budgeted. Just that make, that makes, it is clear as mud, maybe. Councilman Lawrence?
This project is about a half million dollar project.
I'm not sure what the total value of it is. It's, I know there's a seven hundred and thousand dollar grant, I think, total.
And we just passed a budget a month ago and this was left out of it.
Yes, sir.
How did we lose, leave seven hundred thousand dollars out of the budget?
Well, I, I believe this, uh, the city council, uh, approved the grant process in fiscal year 23, I believe. And it was budgeted in that year. And then there has been some delay in this project, which I can't, I mean, I'm not accountable for that and I, I don't know, obviously. But, um, and then this year, their budget request did not include this, uh... Their budget request did not include.
And that's my question. Councilor O'Neil asked everyone, do you need any more money for anything during the budget hearings? And we've got seven hundred thousand dollars that we didn't put in the budget. That's not peanuts.
I mean, our, our portion of that, or at least the agreement that you guys made or that your, this council made in FY 23 was to fund 25% of it.
Right.
So.
Right. Uh, what is the transit authority budget? Roughly. It's okay, don't look at it, it's a bunch. What would happen, it's in the package. Uh, what would happen if we asked them to find that hundred thousand dollars or asking us to come out of general fund and let them go and find it in their budget of several, several, several millions? Since they failed to see it to start with.
Mr. Chairman, may I address that?
Sure.
So we had something, we had their overall operations budget sneak up on us unaccounted for several years ago.
Yes.
That was a major dilemma. As a result, JTA did start sending us their monthly board packets, which do include their financials. So, um, I would encourage you, if you have any curiosity regarding their budget, check that out. Uh, it is largely funded by monies they receive. And there have been some over projections of realistic revenues captured here in the city.
That's correct. And what you're referring to was 500 million, five hundred thousand dollars the city had to come up with at a moment's notice at the end of the year because of the failure to report. This is concerning. Seven hundred thousand dollar budget, a- and the budget just passed and no mention of it. I, I just can't get over that.
I, I want to ask too, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
When we have, when we complete Tyler Muniz, that will help us prevent this from happening from 2023 or rehiring 25.
Well, I mean, in this case, I mean, first of all, there are some process improvements that we continue to work on. But this is an outside agency to us. Uh, we were not aware, I mean, I, I, perhaps in your institutional memory, you were aware that this was a project that was pending. It was not something that anybody, uh, made me aware of. Uh, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm moving forward and digging back as little as I can, uh, because there's, uh... But it was, it was not something that was on our radar. And so, and, I mean, I would hope that, um, and to be honest, we are establishing some, uh, some pretty good relationships with the folks at JTA. Um, and, uh, hopefully this is the kind of thing that we will be aware of, uh, in the future. But it's, I mean, they're an outside agency. This is, should have been a request to us and we didn't receive that. Not blaming them because they probably assumed that you guys remembered that this was, this was out there. I mean, it's a big deal to them. It may not be as big a deal.
But Tyler Muniz will help us.
I don't know how.
No?
It would do in this particular case because again.
We encumber some money in a budget.
Well.
So, but he keeps saying 700,000 when in reality, the only match that we're making, the whole thing is 700,000. The only match we're making is 175, uh, out of the 700,000.
That's correct.
The rest is grant.
That's, in, in this particular contract for 433,000, you're looking at slightly over 100,000. It's a city's commitment here.
Mr. Chairman, I have two things.
Okay, go ahead.
Councilman Donnell, is he still down there?
Yes.
Um, do you have any thoughts or was this discussed at any of the board meetings that you're aware of? I just wanted to get your perspective if you.
Oh, the, the persons from JTA are here. Uh, if you, any, if you have a question, specific question you want to ask.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, may I do that?
Yes.
Okay.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
This project was, uh, an improvement act project that was budgeted back in FY 23. It was for, the grant is for 700,000, which was, uh, 25%, which was approved back then. Since that time, there was some conflict of the way that it was approved and the way that the contract was written. So it had to be re, uh, budgeted in again, okay? So from that time, from 23 up to now, this project has been, we've been working on this project, okay? So where we are now is that it went out for bid again for the construction site. And that's where we are now, which is the 433,000, okay? Um, and Mr. Reed said, you know, we are outside. So we didn't send the individual project in our budget proposal. We sent a request of what our budget proposal was, okay?
So it just basically started all over again this year? It's not like a carryover?
Uh, the project or?
This is encumbered.
It was.
So it wasn't saved.
That makes sense now.
All right, any additional questions, discussions from council? You said two, did you have?
Yes, sir. Um, the other thing I really want to bring up because the next three, four, five and, um, at least three, four and five does have to do with grants. And we've discussed this several times in our Thursday night meetings. And I do think we're working towards a process, but I still feel like council, I like to look at this as my full-time job, but a lot of council members, you know, might not have as much time. And I would like to see something for our grants to be able to remind council, hey, we agreed to this. This is 20%. This is 10%. So when budget does come up, there won't be as many questions. It will be clearer and smoother. So we talked about that last year and I just want to bring that back up.
You know, it's, it's great because, uh, some of the folks in Stan's office have got a really great spreadsheet that lays this out. Um, and, because it, because I was, when we were budgeting this, uh, councilwoman, we, I s- I said, I do not understand. And so I, I got my highlighters and my colored pencils and, and Hannah helped me figure this out, uh, quite a bit. And so it's a good, they've got that data. It's actually distilled pretty easy for this sort of stuff. So anyway, yes, ma'am, we can.
I think we'll look at that, yeah. And, yes, we're working toward a better solution. And what Nathan touched on is for our, our departments, the reporting and the, and the accountability is different than an, an outside entity that requests local funds. I think it's, it's close, but not quite. Go ahead, Councilman Lawrence.
What, what is the JTA budget, total budget?
Five point one.
Five point one million?
Yes.
Is there any way you think you could go back and find 100,000 just to take care of this as it was left out?
No.
Okay. Why was it left out?
You said why?
Yeah, why? Why was it not in the budget?
Uh, we just proposed our yearly budget and it's left up to council. We're not in on your budgeting process.
Can I, let me clarify something. They, they made a budget request this year for 1.5 million dollars. Uh, we funded that at 1.302 million dollars this year. Uh, the capital request from them was about 200,000. Is that, that's accurate? Now, the thing that's, uh, that, I had a nice meeting with them the other day. This actual project was not included in their capital budget request, which was one of the things that concerned me. Because if this had been included in their capital budget request, it would have been before you before now. And that, that was, I mean, and they have been very helpful and very, very forthright and transparent in our conversations. Uh, but the, um, that was, that was of some concern to me is that if this money were going to be necessary in, in this fiscal year, why, you know, why, why that wasn't in there? But that's okay. I mean, it was, it was just missed in your budget preparations. We've missed a couple of things, uh, already. But, um, we already, um, we have, they made a budget request for about 1.5 million. We, uh, you guys appropriated 1.302 this year. And so this would be in addition to that 1.302 that, that they, uh, that they were originally appropriated. When you get to the budget amendment time, which was not before you now.
One more quick question. Um, appreciate what you're doing. I think we've, we've come a long way and really appreciate it. Appreciate everybody not putting blame. Do you feel like you're getting the help now accounting wise? I know that you all had asked for. Do you feel like that you're getting enough help to be equipped when these things come up?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion pass seven to one, no.
Item three's consideration, thanks Travis, item three's consideration of a contract with TLM for professional consultant engineering services related to construction of North Parkway multimodal phase two project.
Motion.
Have a motion?
Second.
In a second. Further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion pass eight to zero.
Item four's consideration of a contract with TLM for professional consultant engineering services related to construction of the Jackson Airways Phase Four project.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, would you mind for clarity for the public?
Yes.
On, yes, because you did that and it was broken.
Yes, so we have item four and three, um, phase four and phase three, which are items four and five on the agenda. Uh, this part of our, our multimodal contract, multimodal, I'm sorry, transportation alternatives project on airways for the complete rebuild of airways. Um, we're scheduled right now, phase one and two is combined into one phase, which takes us from Highland to Hollywood. Uh, and that's scheduled to start construction, May, June of next year. Uh, and so this will go into design phase, environmental phase, as you get state and federal grants. Say, we have to work at their timeline, not ours. And so, um, hopefully the plan is, once we complete construction to Hollywood, we can start construction from Hollywood to State Street, which is phase three. And then phase four is from State Street to the bypass, which would be a complete, as I said, rebuild of the road, uh, improvement on, um, on sidewalks and, um, greenery and things like that.
Thank you.
That what you wanted?
Yes, sir.
But that would have nothing to do with the actual s- street itself?
Yes, it will. In the process, we're going to tear the street up and rebuild.
All right. Now, I think this would be a good time to point this out. The, the point, the, um, intersection of the bypass and airways is terrible. It's terrible.
Yes, sir.
And.
Amen.
I've spoken, you know, we talked about it, and the public doesn't realize it, but that's under state's jurisdiction. They're the ones responsible for that.
Once airways ends at the bypass, it is the state's responsibility. It's a controlled access highway, and so that we're not even allowed to go on the highway to make repairs.
All right, and I also want to say for the public, I went to the state last week to find out who is the person that the state can just ask, just tell the people to go out there and just pave it, patch it, or something. Because I've been informed that they might do something in June of next year, '26. That intersection can't stay like it is to June '26. And somebody in the state should do something to get that patched up right now. The city, it's not on the city, and the city can't do it.
Correct.
It's the state's responsibility, and the other ones have to do it. So to all of you who might be looking and listening, contact Senator Jackson and contact Representative Shaw. And I don't know if Representative Todd, does he is in that part, too? Contact them and just let them know that airways and the bypass needs to be fixed now. People are tearing the cars all up, going up and down there. It's just in horrendous, bad shape, and something needs to be done. But the citizens of Jackson think it's the city that's doing it. The blame goes to the city. So I want everybody to know that it's not the city, it's the state. And the state can do something to get that fixed right now, instead of waiting until June of '26. That's just outrageous for the citizens of Jackson to have to wait and drive their cars during the interim, up and down that terrible section of state jurisdiction.
Good job.
Yes, sir.
I feel like we need an auto call.
I did tell you.
I feel like we need.
Pass the plate.
I feel like we need to vote.
There you go. We got a motion, a second on item four. Any further discussion on that? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item five is consideration of a contract with TLM for professional consultant engineering services related to construction of the Jackson Airways Phase Three project.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second. Further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item six, consideration of a contract with Galls LLC for leather gear for the police department.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item seven, Sunshine Budget Amendments Less Than $10,000. Item eight is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
I have a question.
Let's go get the motion, a second question.
Of course, sir.
So move.
Second.
Motion second. There you go, now go, councilman.
Okay, only invoices over $10,000. There's about $359,000 for police cars, which I'm for police cars. But is that, where is that money coming from?
It was part of your FY '25 capital appropriations.
Total appropriations for all capitals, it just did one lump sum. This was not a line item in there at all. We had other line items. Which one of those line items is this taking place of?
I don't have that information in front of me.
So, okay, now the second question is, should we not have a budget amendment before we start moving things around?
Yes, sir, and you and I have spoken about this.
And tell your mother, I am not mad at you, you're not mad at me.
We love you, mother.
Mama?
She'll see this, she'll know that, okay.
Hang on, just.
She's texting already.
That's all I'm prepared.
Beating up my son.
As you know, as you know, we anticipated our capital bond funding much more quickly than we are currently receiving it. In early calendar year '25, December, January, right in that period, the police were expressing a need and an interest in purchasing some of these vehicles because they needed to get them on the road. And the question was, can we do this, thinking that we are going to fund these things very shortly? And we did. The, my goal, and when I spoke with Mayor Conger, you know, he said, is this a good idea? I'm like, well, as long as we don't exceed the appropriations that we have. I said, then it's, money is fungible, you know? And so the purpose was then to replace that funding with, with that bond funding when it came in. Now, I will tell you, Councilwoman Wallace, and also whoever was asking me about Tyler, this actually could not happen the way that it's designed now. But at the time, it seemed like a good compromise to try to fund some of the needs that they had, because it was going to be backfilled with other money. There were some other projects that things shifted around a little bit, just because we were able to do that.
Now, you just said that Tyler will not allow us to do that, which implies that it was wrong to do it.
Wrong is such a strong word. It, I will, I will tell you, I will tell you, here's what Tyler, the current system, will do. We can force a transaction through, okay? But on the department level, it's not something they would be able to do at this point without somebody overriding it.
Well, I am very concerned about this, because I think at least it should have been brought up to the council before a $400,000, $359,000 item was moved to somewhere,